You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the January third, twenty twenty-three meeting on the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Today is January third, twenty twenty-three. Happy New Year, everyone, and I would like to call this to order with the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the body, the United States of America, which stands on nation.
All right, Ms. Nileup on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Mr. Miss Dyche.
Present.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jergis. Present, Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
All right, thank you. We are going to start with the election of officers. The first matter of business is the selection of president, and I will open up the floor for nominations for president of the city council. Yes, Councilman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman.
I would like to nominate Sean Fitzpatrick.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second for Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Are there any other nominations for president of city council? Any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Andrew.
I decline.
Decline?
Yes, thank you. So I humbly decline. Any other nominations? I will close the nominations for president of the city council. Ms. Nileup on the roll.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jergis.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations.
Okay, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Dyche for a great year of leadership. I think I got some big shoes to fill. It's a hard act to follow, so thanks again for your services and of previous year. So next up, we have election of vice president. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilman Don Privalinski.
Second, we have a nomination for Councilman Don Privalinski and a second, I mean nomination by Councilwoman Dyche and second by Councilman Paul Preselinski. Are there any other nominations? I have no other nominations. Vice President, Ms. Nileup on the roll.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jergis.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations, Councilman.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, I just want to thank all my fellow colleagues for their support for this position, and I will try to fill it to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My next order of business, approval of the minutes from our December twentieth and our December twenty-seven, twenty-seventh council meeting and also our executive session from December twentieth. Are there any approval, any corrections or additions to be made? Councilman Simmons?
Motion to approve.
I support it.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Simmons and a second by Councilwoman Dyche. Ms. Nileup on the roll call, please.
Ms. Jergis.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And stepping back a second, I also wanted to appoint Councilwoman Dyche as parliamentary. Okay, any reports of standing committees?
Mr. President.
Councilman Don Preselinski.
Yes, I am the liaison to the Human Rights Commission, and I just want to bring note that two of the commissioners are going to be stepping down from the commission. Well, they have at the end of twenty twenty-two. The first one was Nancy Molenauer and Judy Lang will be stepping down, and I want to thank Nancy for her eight years of dedicated professional service, being as a past president the past year, and also thank Judy Lang for serving four years on the Human Rights Commission. Both commissioners were dedicated to working with both the Human Rights Commission in trying to make human rights and human dignity and everything that goes along with that body the very best that it can be for Michigan City, and they did a outstanding job. They're going to be missed, and I just want to say thank you to both of them for doing what you did for Michigan City, and please stay around and keep doing other great things for the city of Michigan City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of any other standing committees? Okay, Finance Committee. Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, President Fitzpatrick. The City Finance Committee meeting did not meet due to that. We do not have any claims from Fund Two Zero Four Two Riverboat nor any funds in number two zero three one Boyd Development. The Riverboat Statement of Cash Positions fiscal year to date, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, four million five hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars, eighty-three cents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And the claims docket for January third, twenty twenty-three, Fund Twenty Forty-two Riverboat Claims, zero. Fund Twenty Thirty-One Boyd Development, zero. Total claim, zero. Reports of special or select committees. Reports from mayor or other city officials, officers and departments. Chief Lagault.
Good evening. Congratulations, President and Vice President. Happy New Year. I look forward to working with all of you in twenty twenty-three. I'm just going to give you a quick report. Our incident calls for the month of December, we had three hundred and sixty-three calls, nine structure fires, two hundred and eighty-three rescue medical emergency calls, seven hazardous condition, fourteen service calls, forty-five good intent calls, four false alarm, false calls, and one special incident type. And my apologies to Kail Nileup. I forgot to get her this ahead of time because I had a mayor meeting previously, so apologies. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. I do have a question, and that deals with the, since you're probably pretty close to them, the ambulance service, EMS service.
Okay.
In the county. Has there been any talk of a reduction of ambulances in the county? And the reason I bring that up is I've heard, I heard on the LaPorte radio station that LaPorte is looking at possibly inserting an ambulance service into their fire department over there. Have you heard anything of that nature?
I have not. I will check on that, and I can get back with you. I know EMS is is looking for employees along with the rest of us, but I don't know. I know LaPorte Fire was looking at combining with the ambulance service. I don't know where they're at with that. That was like a year ago. So I don't know where they're at with that right now, but I can check in with Chief Snyder and and EMS, EMS director, if there's a certain answer you want.
Yeah, because I called EMS director today, but
Okay.
they were off for the for the holiday, so I'll wait till later in the week, give them a call.
I'll make a note of that. I'll give them a call tomorrow.
About that, because if that, if that's what the case is, and you know, I think we need to start planning for the future to make sure that we have proper ambulance coverage in Michigan City.
Yeah, I don't know any information. Everybody will find out.
I don't know either. I just heard it on the radio.
And.
It raised a red flag with me.
I also apologize. I don't see where the Narcan number is here, but I'll get back with you on that.
Okay, you can just send out a text.
For some reason, it's not on here.
Send out a text to the console. That'll be fine.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I had one question if there was no one else. What does the two hundred and eighty-seven rescue calls mostly make up?
Medical calls.
Medical.
Medical, yep, all medical, just various. We go on all critical calls, unconscious, not breathing, chest pains, heart attack calls, you know, anything that's serious. We go on limited injuries, just depends on the nature of the injury, so mostly serious medical calls.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, anything else? Thank you.
Moving on, Ms. Nileup, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions.
Communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on December sixteenth from Attorney Jewel Harris regarding memorandum on the retention of city classification, notwithstanding population decrease.
Thank you, Ms. Nileup. Resolutions?
There are no resolutions.
Ordinances?
There are no ordinances.
New business. FYI, the council has eight appointments to the city of Michigan City Social Status of African American Male Term expires February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and is a one-year term. Incumbents, Pastor Carol from the Human Rights, Pastor Kimberly Williams from Ministerial Association, Linda Fay Conley from NAACP, Willie Millsap, Swanson Center, Rodney McCormick, MC Resident, Dwayne Hurt, Michigan City Air Rescues, Pastor Robert Johnson, Minority Health Partners, and Tracy Tillman, Council Liaison. Are we voting? Are we nominating or voting today, or this is just FYI? Okay, thank you. FYI, the council has one appointment to the Michigan City Tree Board. Term expires February fifteen, twenty twenty-three, and it's a one-year term. Incumbent Laura Henderson, representing Elston Grove Neighborhood Association. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Mr. Dennis Britton as a member of the Michigan City Tree Board. Unfinished business. Oh, do we need to vote on that? The advice and consent.
You can.
Or we, is it required?
I don't think, I mean, if you're advice and consent, so I think the more formality, if you want more formality behind it, you can take the vote on it to support this.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I move that we provide advice and consent on Mr. Dennis Britton as a member of the Michigan City Tree Board.
Support. Okay, we have a motion to support the mayor's request of advice and consent for the appointment of Mr. Dennis Britton to the Michigan City Tree Board and a second by Councilman Paul Preselinski. Ms. Nileup on the roll call.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jergis.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nileup. Congratulations, Mr. Britton. Unfinished business. The council has one nomination to the Michigan City Women's Commission, representing non-profit organization Women's Issues. Term expires December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Dame Converte, Ms. Nicole Coleman. Ms. Nileup, have we received any applications?
Yes, we did receive an application from Ms. Linda Conley.
Councilwoman Dyche.
I move that we nominate Ms. Linda Conley for the Women's Commission.
Support.
We have a motion to nominate Ms. Linda Conley to the Women's Commission by Councilwoman Dyche and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. Are there any other nominations? Were there any other applications submitted?
No, there wasn't.
Ms. Nileup, do we want to vote on this, or?
We can do a vote tonight.
Yes, since it's on the line.
It's only the one, and then the term expired on this twenty-first. I would say let's take a vote. Ms. Nileup on the roll call, please.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jergis.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nileup. Congratulations, Ms. Conley. The Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association due to Ms. Esther Gunchen resignation from her appointment. Term begins immediately, expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Are there any applications there for this position?
No, we have not received any.
Thank you, Ms. Nile. Council has one Democratic appointment to the Fire Merritt Commission. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Nominations, Mark Miller and Tommy Kalavich. Are either telling the hurt speech tonight?
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I want to say that anytime there is an election or a selection process such as this, and if you're anything like me, you really get tired of all the mudslinging and negative campaign that goes on, so I want to first state that my two fellow applicants, Mr. Mark Miller and Mr. Joe Borton, are truly wonderful and righteous dudes. I'd like to say that I feel I'm very well qualified for this position. When I got my nomination, I want to thank Mr. Sean Fitz, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick, for nominating me and Councilwoman Tracy Tillman for seconding. It's very honored because you're the liaison to the Fire Merritt Commission and the Fire Commission Headquarters or Administration Building is right in the Councilwoman Tracy Tillman's favorhood. I feel I went back and I watched all the Fire Merritt Commission meetings. I almost feel like I know all the both of both Chief Lagault and the Fire Union President, Captain Barry Taylor personally, and you know, I'm actually Bob Pollack, he commissioned Bob Pollack. He's a senior commissioner on the Merritt Commission. He was my accounting professor thirty years ago at Purdue North Central. I got into his course. Super, super brilliant man. He's actually a CPA. He's an accountant. CPA, he's an attorney and a college professor. He was a, he was a city councilman back in the seventies. He actually did some consulting accounting work with my dad. My dad was a cost accountant at ANCO when they changed their accounting system over from Cooper Industries, from Cooper Industries when they were bought out by Federal Mogul. You know, the first thing he taught us is his students in the classes about GAAP, which is an acronym for the General Accepted Principles of Accounting, which is the ethical standard for an accountant. You know, that really relates to this Fire Merritt Commission because you know, you got to be a firefighter, you got to be a very high ethical standards. The meetings I watch, I think it's probably the most impressive commissioner board that we have in the city because it's almost like a military type the way it's run. You know, Bob Pollack, he was a, he's a Navy veteran, a very proud Navy veteran. I feel like, you know, I'm not going to let you down if I get that. I'm going to say what this is what Coach Kalitha instilled to the boys and the pop warriors. I intend on playing perfect. I really shouldn't say this. It's really between a very elite group of Michigan City residents should know this. I'm trying to tell you what playing perfect means. Playing perfect means not letting your brothers and sisters down. I'd like to go on. There's some concerns I have with the fire department that I'd like to address. I may bring up at future meetings if I could mention those.
Quickly.
Well, I don't want to go on too long. I want to ensure and see that the Michigan City Fire I want to see more Michigan City Fire and Police escorts when the T's make the deep runs in the IHA tournaments and bring some section, regional semi-state, the state championships. Now, that's one thing I'll ever get tired of seeing. I want to see more of that. I want to ensure that the Michigan City Fire Department properly observes, celebrates the Juneteenth holiday on an annual basis. This wasn't done at the county level, and it was very upsetting to our many residents here. I want to ensure that the Michigan City Fire Department continues the decades-old practice of all the firefighters going to the grocery store in the fire truck together to buy their provisions for the firehouse. I actually corresponded with the two previous chiefs ago, Randy Novak, and you explained why they do that. It's because units have to stay together at all times. I asked him, why can't you just make a list and send one firefighter to the grocery store? He said, he said that all the, all the stations are on minimal staffing, and they have to, you know, if they have an extra guy, they'll send them. A lot of times I'll see firefighters' life, like Mama Kalitha, buying a bunch of groceries and delivering the firehouse themselves, and the firefighters don't receive a stipend for the food. It all comes out of their pocket. I want to ensure that the members of the Michigan City Fire Department receives their due compensation for the half a percent lit tax that took effect and they began collecting that out of our paychecks back in October. I don't know if that's still in their, their contract, that they're still grandfathering, I want to make sure they're receiving that because you all voted on that, and I think that's really important. I want to ensure the Michigan City Fire is included in Amendment Policy Number Three Zero Five in the employee manual, giving the workers a paid day, a paid day of holiday for their birthday. That just went through the board of works in the last meeting. Mayor Perry approved this. I think that's a great idea. Just because the firefighters are unionized, they get that too. This is similar to what we did with ANCO. If we gave an hour's pay a month to the United Way of LaPorte County, we received a bonus vacation day. So I want to establish a policy for the Michigan City Fire Department, voluntary donates a set portion of their wages to the South Asian Army, and return, they'll receive a bonus paid vacation day. Well, that probably have to be ratified by their union. I'd like to, in the ordinance, I'd like to lower the age limit to become a Michigan City fighter from age twenty-one to age eighteen, and adversely raise the mandatory retirement age from age sixty-five to age sixty-eight. I think for the, for the young firefighter, we should hire for the, for the senior firefighters. I want to do whatever is possible for the fire department to receive their new fire truck. You know, Chief Bruner and Fire Marshal Bruner and Chief Lagault, they came up here requesting that. It's probably a million dollars. You know, if we can put a million dollars into the, into the quiet zones, if we get people to Chicago, I think we can get a million dollars for their fire truck to protect the city.
About done.
Very quickly, I got just, just a few more. I want to have the study material for the firefighters to be put online. There was an incident where the where a firefighter took a manual home from the fire stand. They're supposed to stay at the start, and he, he was denied a promotion for that. That was real severe. I need to, in light of what happened in Cincinnati last night, I want to need the would like to have the fire department partner with the Play for Jake Foundation and the Bolt for Heart, who ensures that all Michigan City Fire Department vehicles be equipped with ice saving AED devices to receive for the cardiac arrest victims. I know the county, the LaPorte County Sheriff's Office has all their vehicles equipped with the AED vehicles. And finally, I wanted to express my Christmas wish to become the new Fire Merritt Commish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Okay, Mr. Miller, present. Ms. Nileup on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Oh. And for the vote, state the name of the individual you want to vote for.
Mr. Dabney.
Kalavich.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Kalavich.
Mr. Matt.
Kalavich.
Mr. Miss Dyche.
Kalavich.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Miller.
Mr. Simmons.
Kalavich.
Ms. Jergis.
Kalavich.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Miller.
And Ms. Tillman.
Kalavich.
We have seven for Mr. Kalavich and two for Mr. Miller. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Kalavich. Congratulations, Chief Lagault. I think you got some good suggestions coming up. Any comments from the public?
Double goal, Michigan City Fire Chief. Congratulations, Tommy. And it was text to me, nine Narcan calls for the month of December, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
I'll be sure.
Please state your name.
Bernie Allahan, three oh two Gladys Street.
Thank you, Mr. Allahan.
Just want to congratulate you two on your elections and wish you all a happy new year and hope this year is a lot better than last year. Thank you.
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I want to wish our retired Sheriff John Boyd a happy retirement. It was thirty-eight years of law enforcement. I want to congratulate our new sheriff, Ron Heag, his administrative staff. Captain Dewak, he'll be moving from the jail commander to become the new, new chief deputy. Captain Andy Han, he'll be moving from the chief of detectives to become the new tech captain. Ospice is the new jail commander. Captain Andy Heineck is going to be moving from the midnight shift, and he's going to take Andy Han's position as the chief of detectives, and Captain Derek Allen, he's going to continue serving as the administrator captain as he did under Sheriff Boyd. I want to congratulate Brayden Fest from Michigan City High School, class of two thousand and eighteen. He's a well, one heck of a football player. He's like six foot six, three hundred pounds. He, he's transferred, he's been at Western Michigan University for the last five years. He's transferred to Florida State University, where he's going to be playing his graduate year of football, so we're going to be seeing a lot of Brayden on national TV. I want to say today is my thirty-year anniversary of being a LaPorte County resident and a resident of the Michigan City Area Schools. Me and mom went and bought our house out in the county thirty years ago today, January third, twenty twenty-three, and it's going to be my ten-year anniversary when I bought my house in November here on Ohio Street, Michigan City. I'm really proud of that. It's great to be among you. Since last, I would just, this is really personal for me. I want to, want to again thank you, wonderful, nine amazingly awesome council members for the amazing, the wonderful historical round-making landmark decision you made a year ago. It's going to go down as your crowning achievement as a council, and that's opening up the Michigan City Promise Scholarship for the students that rent. You know, as we're going into our second semester and we got our eyes on the prize. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. You're welcome. Comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. We have a lot of appointments up on the social status that should have been taken care of tonight. We're going into our next meeting, which will be next week with nominating office, office holders. Right now, I'm the vice president. Mr. Fly is the president. Ms. Benning is the treasurer, and Belinda Lee is the secretary. I think it's unfair to everybody that's on that board to have to continue to wait for this process. I spoke about this a year ago. We need to change the, need to change this. We should be going into our board meeting this first, first of the month of the year and being able to elect office holders because there's a chance that I won't get reassigned to this commission, and some other people might not get reassigned to that. It's not fair for all of us who's putting in hard work on it, on the social status, like it or not. On another note, the public, I appreciate everyone who calls me and encourage me to continue doing whatever it is that I'm doing. They seem to think that I was helping the public, but I'm getting tired of the phone calls, hearing about city council members against me and hearing about the ministers coming in, threatening people. I'm just sick and tired of it. I hope that when we vote, if you got something personal against the individual, just abstain from voting. When you vote, and when it comes to voting for me or anyone else, look at the job and the performance that we done. Look how much time and dedication, and also look at our attendance records. It's very important. I just don't know. I I just don't know, um I appreciate everybody out there. I mean, I ran as a libertarian over one thousand and fourteen people voted for me. I, that was um a a great honor for me as well, but we have to do better than what we're doing right now. So I wish you guys can really get this vote over with, but I guess it'll be next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public?
Um Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I wanna remind everybody tomorrow is the first day to file for the municipal election. Uh you got, I know you gotta go to the county courthouse in La Porte, the voters registration office. I wanna wish anybody that's that's gonna be filing the best luck in the election. I know a few of you aren't gonna be returning or be able to run for your your council seat. I uh I think it's really important that everybody understands you need to read a, I think it's Article Two of the Michigan City Municipal Code if you wanna be a councilman. Now, you need to understand the the structure of our cities, of our cities of the first class, the cities of the second class, and the cities of the third class. I just wanna, we might have a little need to know the day when I can definitely get sworn in, fill out my tax forms, get paid. Thank you. Tomorrow, tomorrow morning eight, I wanna go to the council's commission meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Kalavich. Uh any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council? Councilwoman uh Jigus.
Thank you. Um I have a little flyer here and I think I'm gonna ask uh Mister White to put it up on the screen here. So the the League of Women Voters is is running a candidate workshop. You might be very interested, Tommy, because it's a candidate workshop on how to run for city and town council. And everyone is welcome. It, you don't have to be a woman or a member, like encourage people who are kind of halfway thinking or someone you think that might be good on town council or city council. And the flyer, it's it's Monday, January ninth at six P M at the E O C. It's right down here. And the the little flyer says, do you wanna make a difference in your community? Run for office. Your city or town needs engaged council members. It could be you. Find out what the qualifications, requirements, and deadlines are to run for city or town council and get some tips on how to run a campaign. All are invited and there's an email for questions, info dot L W V LaPorte at gmail dot com. This will be up on my website and I think it's gonna be on social media as much as we can. We have sent out a press release. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jigus. Councilman Paul Preswellinsky.
Thank you, uh President Fitzpatrick. Um congratulations, Tom. And uh I think you got some good ideas there, but you need to look and focus on the uh prize as a merit commissioner and over there, uh what what you're actually over is there working conditions and grievances and things of that nature. They're internal, personal uh procedures. So and some of them things you mentioned are regulated by state law and uh also regulated by the city council.
Right.
So there are some problems within the uh merit commission, but also I think you need to remember one thing is all the all the good things you said about people, that's well and fine. But you have to weigh things on the merit and you might have to be the lone dog vote, you know? So that's what you gotta remember or being the the opinion and bringing that opinion forward with the debate. So those other commissioners realize what is going on if they're really interpreting the merit ordinance correctly. Thank you. They just have a disciplinary action in uh I uh they did not have a full commission there.
Councilman Don Preswell.
Uh thank you, Mister President. And uh yeah, I wanna thank uh Councilwoman Deitch for her leadership last year. I know we had a lot of uh touchy situations here and there and trying to get this A R P money uh out to the public and getting that all all put together. And I think you did a uh a great job getting that done and uh many other things as being president of the council. And uh Tommy, congratulations on your uh your appointment. I wa- I wish you uh wish you well. And uh yeah, just work well with the commission and as Councilman Paul Preswellinsky said, you know, make sure it's all about the merit commission and, you know, having being uh fair and being equal and look at it in that perspective also instead of all the once, once, once. Gotta make sure we're doing what is said said by in the uh state and city ordinances. Uh happy new year to everyone here, to all the city employees, to all my council members. You know, let's have a great year. You know, it's gonna be an election year. A lot of fun involved with that all the time. And uh yeah, uh that that'll be, that'll be great. Uh it's always good to you know, wake up the ideas and wake up the spirit and get moving on stuff like that. Uh one thing, uh and also that Mister Ken Lang, who served on the Michigan City Park Board for the past four years, he'll be stepping down also as a park board member. And I just wanna thank uh Mister Lang for all his uh professionalism that he brought to the uh to the board. His investigativeness, uh looking at the issues and truly caring about the board, the parks, and trying to make our park system uh uh better. And finally, tomorrow night, which I find is is a very important meeting. And we always sit around and complain about our NIPSCO rates going up and we've been talking about this for the past year. That I know tomorrow night, they're gonna have the final field meeting in Valparaiso at the Valparaiso High School at six P M. So if you wanna voice any opposition to the rate increase that will be imposed, whether it's ten dollars a month or twenty dollars a month. The U R C is gonna be there tomorrow night to listen to uh public opinion. So if you're interested in going, Valparaiso High School, six P M tomorrow night. Otherwise, when they raise the rates, don't sit around and complain about it. Pay the price and that's what happens. Uh with that being said, congratulations, Mister Fitzpatrick to the presidency. Let's have a great year.
Thank you, Councilman Preswellinsky. Uh Councilman Mac.
Uh just real quick, um just uh yesterday, day before, I sent a email to all the council people uh asking for support on the next meeting or maybe the one after that, uh Joe. Uh our our attorney is drafting up some legislation to uh pay for a scope of work studied by Structure Point um on where and how and what we would offer as far as a sports facility uh that, you know, I've been talking about since the uh beginning. I'm gonna just read the letter real quick. Shouldn't take up my three minutes. And uh you can probably go online and get it, but if anybody wants to see it, you know, I'll I'll send it to them. It'll be public very shortly. Uh fellow councilmen, I'm writing to solicit your support for building a large city-sponsored athletic community center here in Michigan City. You've heard me speak my entire term on the belief that it's desperately needed in our community. And I believe we must invest in structures that can build and unite people here in Michigan City. Attached is the pro- proposal from Structure Point that will determine the size and scope of the facility and what we can offer based on market needs and community input. They do a full assessment and analysis which is outlined in the proposal. As you know, Michigan City is a growing destination for visitors. We also have a very strong youth sports history. We current lack currently lack adequate facilities to meet the demand for organized youth activity. Many of our young athletes are forced to travel long distances to participate in organized sports, and this can be a burden for families and the coaches. It also eliminates an entire in- entire income groups from participating in potentially life-altering activities. A new athletic complex would not only provide much-needed resources for our youth sports programs, but it would also bring economic benefits to the city. The construction and operation of the complex would create jobs and generate revenue through facility rentals and events. In addition, the complex would serve as a destination for regional and even national tournament uh tournaments uh bringing even more economic activity into the area. Just uh this is not in the letter, but when I did my tour in Hammond, Indiana, the thing that shocked me is how much they they wish they'd have got there. It's bigger because they're finding that charter schools have nowhere to uh do this. So they're making money just off the regular stuff, the A A U tournament and the people that use the facility, but and the advertisements and things, but charter schools want a a facility they can use. Uh homeschoolers, they have the homeschool championships uh at that facility. So there's just some, a lot of benefits that you don't see uh that are coming and the mayor is just, he believes that's the best decision, Mayor McDermott uh that that he's ever made uh uh in in his uh terms, mayor. But anyway, there are many potential locations for the complex and I believe that with careful careful planning and input from the community, we can identify the best site. I envision a state of art, state-of-the-art facility with multiple fields and courts for a variety of sports as well as amenities such as concessions, restrooms, seating for spectators. Hammond and South Bend both have set facilities of this caliber. Hammond is actually looking to expand. Um I also understand that uh any major construction projects come with financial considerations, but I believe long-term benefits of this complex would far outweigh the upfront costs. I'm confident we can secure funding through a combination of public-private partnerships, grants, and sponsorships. Uh there's a group that built the facility that I also toured in uh Maryville. And they are also interested in investing in ours if we uh actually do. It's this conversation right now, but they 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 definitely pique their interest. I urge you to join me in supporting this important initiative for the community. Let's give our young athletes the facilities they deserve and create a bright future. It all starts with approving this funding. I'll be introducing the resolution at the end of January. Uh hopefully using A R P funds or riverboat funds or a combination of of both. It's uh two hundred and it's less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get this company to doing the job that they need to do to identify uh the total cost and the total scope of work and what we're actually gonna use here in Michigan City. So uh tell your people, hopefully the next meeting will be up for a vote on that and we can actually, you know, begin to do something super strong and positive for the community.
Thank you, Councilman Mac. Any comment, any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? Um have none. I guess really quick, I'll say uh happy new year, everyone. Uh thank you for the nomination and uh you're affecting me to do a good job representing and uh presiding over these hearings here and uh look forward to this this new year and all the things that it has to offer. So uh with that being said, is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Much to adjourn by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. All in favor? Good evening. Have a good night.